Call roll, please.
Here.
Here.
I'm McDonald.
Here.
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 Wonderful, thank you. I want to welcome everybody to your regularly scheduled meeting. It's March already of your Bel Air City Council, and as with all meetings, we will begin with a moment of silent prayer if you'll please join me in that. Amen. Now please rise and join in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to welcome everybody watching at home and everybody in the audience here tonight. Appreciate you being here. Like I said, for a regularly scheduled meeting, the first item before council is the consent agenda, which has three items in it. The minutes of the February 17th meeting also looking at May 2nd as a shredding slash recycling day, and also includes the, an application to sell fireworks from Wholesale Fireworks, benefiting Sunrise Christian Academy as the local sponsor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. We have a first and second. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On item C, because I am employed there, I will just abstain. I talked to the attorney for the whole vote, just so there would be no conflict.
I understand. Appreciate that. Have the notes mention that. Go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and abstained.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's you.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. I'm abstaining.
Okay, next is discussion and approval of appropriation ordinance 15-05. And should point out, this is in, for $556,642.42. Just, I always appreciate how that comes down to the penny. I mean, how we're showing where every penny is going. You know, $115,000, that basically is to a capital project. You know, 300 of that's for the GO bond interest, which is going to be special assessed. So, just a little more clarification on the appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. O'Donnell?
I'm going to make a motion, then I have a question about it.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 15-05 in the amount of $556,642.42. Session.
Second, we have a first and second.
And I apologize, I don't have the line up, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay, and I know we do have one question on that from the bench.
On Dr. Becker's Hugo Wall, it says 214. It's the last, shouldn't it say 215 Municipal Leadership Seminar there?
No, actually, that must have gotten lost in somebody's drawer over there, because they didn't bill us. I didn't see a bill for it until just the last couple of months.
Oh, so you did go in the fall. I thought, I knew, I thought you went again.
No.
Okay.
It's correct, but we just weren't billed until just recently, so.
I just thought maybe you'd signed up and went again.
Oh, no.
Since it's just now. Okay.
Be nice to have deep pockets, not have to bill.
Okay, that answered my question, no problem. Thank you.
That was for last year.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments on appropriations ordinance 15-05? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next is a proclamation. Excuse me, I need to pull that up. Where did it go? I just.
Number four.
Yeah, it's not opening.
Bomb line.
Pardon me, my computer went to sleep here, but it's, there it is. Or I'll read the old-fashioned way, but here it is, okay, finally. How to wake everything up. And this is a proclamation proclaiming March 28th as Bel Air Play Day for Playful City, USA. And just think that that's pretty neat that we have that distinction. We talked about that at the state of the city, but also that day is going to be our Spring Festival, which you saw a big ad in The Breeze, which came out today, and I'm sure Mr. Lasher will probably talk a little bit about that. Now, I put you on the spot, but yeah, coming up, March 28th, we'll have that. So, and I know this is something that our Community Development Advisory Council worked on, and everybody here at the staff, and it's just really neat for Play Day. So, here it is. "To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, whereas play is crucial, is a crucial factor in the overall well-being of children, and whereas play spaces and playgrounds within walking distance of children's homes are missing from many communities and neighborhoods, and whereas unstructured, unplanned, spontaneous, and self-motivated play is on the decline, and whereas fewer children spend time outside at parks and playgrounds, and whereas recess is being shortened or removed from the school curriculum, and whereas children who play are healthier and suffer less obesity and obesity-related health problems such as diabetes and heart disease." Excuse me. "And whereas children who play do better in school and develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance, and whereas children who play learn the social skills that help them become happy and well-adjusted adults, and whereas parents, schools, childcare centers, nonprofit organizations, businesses, churches, synagogues, mosque, and all interested parties wish to raise the community's children to become healthy, happy, and successful adults. Therefore, I, David Austin, Mayor, do hereby proclaim March 28th, 2015, as Play Day in the city of Bel Air, and call upon all citizens to celebrate Play Day and support efforts to build and maintain play spaces and playgrounds in their communities and neighborhoods. Further, I urge all citizens to continue to support and maintain play spaces and playgrounds for the well-being of this and future generations." And I'll be happy to sign that. So, that's a, reading proclamations, I think is one of the neatest things a mayor gets to do. There's lots of neat things we get to do. Next, we'll move on to city requested appearances. There are two of them. The first is Chief Daryl Atterberry. Want to step up to the mic, and Chief Atterberry's, yeah.
To make a couple of presentations, some certificates of commendation for two of our officers. We have Officer Joshua Elpers and Reserve Officer Eric Carter. And I'll read from the certificate and not from the.
Okay.
Might take a while. On Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, Officer Elpers and Reserve Officer Carter responded to the dispatch call of a suicide subject. Officer Elpers and Officer Carter encountered a subject with a knife at the front door of the residence. The subject stated he was going to kill the officers if they did not shoot him. Officer Elpers and Officer Carter remained calm during the encounter. The subject was taken into custody after a short standoff without incident. Both officers demonstrated exceptional restraint and verbal communication with the subject during the incident. Neither of the officers or the subject were injured during the incident. So, I'm very pleased with the officers. These things happen throughout our country every day. We're officers in situations without incident. We hear often about the things that go wrong, those situations where officers have to use deadly force. This is a situation where they did not. Very pleased with them, and I'd like to make that presentation now. Officer Elpers. Carter, thank you.
And thank you. I'll just say, I know, you know, we were voted one of the safest cities very recently, and I think a lot of that's due to our police force being active and out on patrol and being seen and visible, and we all appreciate you, gentlemen. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under city requested appearances, is Jacob Marietta from Wholesale Fireworks.
Good evening, Jacob Marietta, Wholesale Fireworks, as the mayor just said. Just came to thank you guys. You know, it's been right out of years since you guys approved us for our new building. We've been in there right at six months, one firework season. We've since opened Jumpy Jump Land, the kids' birthday play party area in there, and just want to thank you guys for the opportunity. The building's working great for us. We hope you're happy with us and the community. We're happy to be here and hope to be here for a long time. So, just want to say thank you, guys, and for getting this started, and it's been a year, and hopefully, I'll come each year and bother you and ask you to come jump. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we can go to Jumpy Jump Land, is that?
Anytime.
All right. Meeting, let's wrap it up, guys.
Break the leg.
Okay, next, we'll open it up to citizens' concerns. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council this evening? Is this the time they can do so? Okay. Hearing them, we're going to move on to reports. I have no formal report tonight, but other than to let people know, again, Bel Air businesses continue to get positive press, and we, the grand opening of the Concierge Surgical Center is on the back page of Splurge with a bunch of color pictures, and I think Councilmember McDonald's in a couple of those, and it's just great to see more of those openings. And Mrs. Martine, I think the whole council, actually, at one point, were in there somehow. So, it's just, just great to see Splurge Magazine, which is a pretty popular magazine in this region, highlight Bel Air business like that. So, it's into my report. We'll start with Mrs. Martine.
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Just like to reiterate that March 28th is going to be Easter egg hunt at the rec center, and invite everybody to bring their children. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, thank you. So, O'Donnell?
I just want to say I have mixed emotions, because I'm so excited about March 28th, but my mock trial team on Saturday qualified for state, which I'm super excited about. So, that, I'm going to be gone the 27th, 28th to Topeka to try to go to nationals. So, I'm excited about that, but unfortunately, I'll be gone.
10,000 Easter eggs, and you want to go.
I know, I know. I'm thinking, I know. I know.
I understand.
That's okay, but take lots of pictures for me.
Absolutely. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I have to apologize, I'll be missing the next meeting. It's spring break, and my family and I are going to be out of town, so I guess I shouldn't announce that to the world. My house is empty, but.
We have a good police force.
Yeah, Chief Atterberry's got extra patrol going on.
I'll have my vacation patrol scheduled, but I won't be at the next meeting, unfortunately, but I do plan on being available for the workshop if it's required. Tomorrow afternoon is the meeting for that 2035 Steering Committee that I sit on. We haven't had a meeting in a little while. They've been talking to department heads and some of the local government, like Sedgwick County, and city, which City of Wichita government about the plan that's been put for so far. So, we're going to hear the feedback from that. So, at the next meeting I'm at, I will bring that to the council and kind of let you know where things stand. But we've had a little bit of a break. It was nice. Two meetings a month, it wasn't fun, but I'm ready to be back at it now. The other thing is, is I don't recall seeing any notification about a SCAC meeting this month.
Yeah, there is. There is, it's, it's, yeah, it's the 14th.
Okay. I won't be at that meeting, the same excuse as why I won't be at the city council meeting, so hopefully, somebody else can attend that.
I want to speak, too.
Thank you.
I'm not going anywhere.
I guess I'm.
You guys need me to go. All right. Dr. Becker?
I just want to say that I am saving up two big boxes of things I want to have shredded by the Lions Club, and I do this every year. And, you know, you just don't realize what a great service that is to the community. I own two shredders at home, but you know, if you'd clean out a bunch of stuff and old records, it's a lot to sit there and shred every single piece. So, if you can just take a box to the Lions Club on that day that, I think it's May the 2nd?
Second.
That you have that scheduled?
Yes.
I'm looking forward to that, and they'll also take
Yes.
old electronic products
Yes.
that day, which is a great service also, because those electronic products contain things that we don't want to put in our landfill, so we need to dispose of those properly, and that is another great service the Lions Club is doing for our community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to add that, in addition to electronics, that there would be a charge for what is called a CRT, I think a $50 charge to get rid of that, because it's so big and bulky, but everything else is free.
Yeah.
Just free.
And what is a CRT?
It's an old-fashioned computer monitor.
Okay.
With a big, with a big back.
Okay.
Or TVs. I had to pay. I had to pay, but it was worth it to get out of my garage.
Yeah.
It was worth it.
I also wanted to just mention that I'm really excited to see the new houses going up in Chapel Hill, which is pretty close to our street there in our neighborhood, and that's very exciting. It's going to be exciting to see those roads going in, too, real soon, as soon as it warms up a little bit. We're all excited about the Spring Festival. The committee's been doing great work on that, and so everybody needs to put March the 28th on their calendar. It's going to be all afternoon on Saturday. Lots of fun for the kids and the whole family. And I also just wanted to mention that I was really excited to see, and I, I'm not going to name any names, but I think several local businesses have donated for our markers. Is that public knowledge?
Somewhat.
Okay. I'm not naming any names, but it's nice to see local businesses getting excited about.
We've got four of them, yeah.
Yeah, we've had four that have made donations to pay for those, so that's wonderful. And I also participated this afternoon in the League of Municipalities, Kansas Municipalities webinar, and I will be glad to share with the council what I learned from that. It was very enlightening. So, I'll send you an email and let you know where you can get that information.
Wonderful, appreciate it.
Thank you, that's all, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you so much. And tonight, filling in, as Allison has been called out of town, is Prosecutor Terry Bell sitting in for city attorney, and assuming you have a report?
I do not have a.
No problem. So, we'll move to City Manager Ty Lasher.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several things. Several of them are pretty exciting that I'm looking forward to sharing. First of all, for the second year in a row, the city received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. Last year was our first year. We're excited that we got it again this year. And the Distinguished Budget Award, some of the things that have to be, the guidelines that are required to be in your budget to get that award are, it must meet a policy document, it must have a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device for citizens when they come in and get a copy of the budget or read it online, that it really gets the information out that, that a citizen might be interested in. And so, we're excited that our budget meets that criteria. The other neat thing is that in Kansas, there's only 14 cities that receive this award, and three of them are of the second class, which Bel Air is one. So, there's us and two other cities of our size that actually get this in all of Kansas. So, pretty excited about that. Michelle does a great job, and her staff, so we're excited about that. Another thing to follow up with, Ms. Becker was talking about on our entry monuments, as the mayor stated, we have four of them paid for. The city bought the first one, and if anybody drove at the intersection there at 37th and Woodlawn and seen some wood on the ground by the bank, that's, they're getting ready to, as soon as the weather cooperates, they'll pour the concrete form in, and then at a later point, they'll bring the stone in. But then we also have an anonymous donor that's doing one at 37th and, Oliver, and then Wickham Glass donated one for us at 45th and Webb, and then Broadstone Villas, which are the new apartments that are going up here right across from the school, donated a sign for 45th and Rock. So, it's pretty exciting that the city invested 7,200, and so far, we've been able to install, you know, 10, well, it'd be $30,000 worth of signs, roughly, and we still have some more invites out for people to participate in that. So, we're really excited at the support that we've gotten. And along with that, the Parks Division actually was able to acquire a $1,000 grant that will help us do some landscaping around the, and the grant was for zero-scaping landscaping, which means that it doesn't require water. And several of the, actually, the only one at 37th and Woodlawn has water. The rest of them do not have water. So, we're going to be able to use $1,000 worth of the grant money, no match required, that we can do some landscaping around the other signs that are going in. Wanted to remind the council and the citizens that there's a grand opening and ribbon cutting for Broadstone Villas, which are the apartments right up here across from the high school, on March 12th at 11:30 a.m., and they're going to serve lunch. So, if, obviously, I'm sure the council will be there. We'll put a news release out, and hopefully, we'll get some more people there.
Mr. Lasher?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Do you know how long that's going to be?
I would, I don't, I would guess an hour. We'll probably do the ribbon cutting right at 11:30.
Okay.
And then I think they were going to have lunch, and so, probably, you know, you can stay as long as you want, I would guess. And probably, hopefully, they'll have some apartments open that we could tour, but they're at least 50% full already. So, that's.
Sorry to interrupt. I wanted to find out. Thanks.
And then the, I wanted to mention, because the election season is upon us, and obviously, Bel Air didn't have any primaries today, but the general election's coming up in April, and there are two sponsored candidate forums for Bel Air candidates in March. One will be on March 19th at 7:00 p.m. at the rec center, and then the second one will be March 31st at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall in the community room. So, there's two different groups that are handling those. We'll help get the word out to citizens and things like that to let them know that those are coming up. And then, just a little information, because with the elections, you start seeing the signs up around town, and we do have some regulations on that. You can't put signs up until March 8th, and then they can stay up through the election. The three foot is the maximum height unless it's attached to a fence. Five square feet is the sign face max. They, they can only be in, on private property. They cannot be on any public property such as right of ways, and if they are, then the city can remove those, and there's a fee to get those back. One sign per legally registered candidate per lot. So, in other words, one candidate can't have five signs on one lot. So, each candidate can have one sign on one lot. And the city can remove any defective signs in the public right of way or a dangerous sign without notice. So, so if someone puts a sign in a public right of way that's missing, then the city has the ability to take those, and then they can contact the city to get those back. So, just a reminder on that, for, we have a number of people running, so let everybody know. And the information, too, is on our website, so if anybody has any questions. The last thing I had was the Community Development Committee, as Ms. Becker stated, several things going on, and they're actually going to be at the next council meeting for presentation, and they've got several exciting things they've been working on that I think everybody will like to hear. And they'll present the Spring Festival and another few items that they've been working on to help Bel Air. So, that's all I had, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Mr. Lee?
I had one quick question for you. You mentioned signs in the street right of way and the regulations. If, if there's a member of the public who sees a sign that they have a question about, is the appropriate response is to get ahold of Keith or yourself to let you know? It's not really upon the public to start removing signs, I would guess.
Nope. Nope, that's, that's not appropriate. Call City Hall, and either Keith or Jamie or anybody here can help. Just tell us. And typically, just a good area would be 15-foot from the street is typically where the right of way starts. So, that kind of gives you an idea. If something's right along the road, it's in the right of way, but if it's 15, 20-foot out from the road, typically, that's on public, or on private property.
Thank you, thank you. Lots of stuff going on. It's springtime, things are happening. It is springtime. I think the pot's up here.
Almost.
Let's move on into ordinance's resolutions and final actions. The first is a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of GO refunding bonds, Series 2015A. These are taxable GO refunding bonds, Series 215B, and GO temp note, Series 2015C, from the city. Basically, and we do have some folks here that can speak to this if need be, but we're refunding and refinancing bonds that are seven or eight years old from 2007. The, the interest rates are lower now than they have been since like the 60s. And by doing this, it can save, basically save half a million dollars. So, I would strongly encourage us doing that. And then I know, you know, our action with this, because it was Catholic Care Center is moving to Phase 3, so that's why these are all together with extending the water main, and everything's moved in with these GO bonds, packaging them all together. Tom Calico is here, if you'd like to have him speak to us at all, and I know Marcus from Catholic Care Center, Jason Gish from MKUC for council, if anybody wants to hear from any of those folks. Before.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2015A, taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2015B, and general obligation temporary notes, Series 2015C, of the city of Bel Air, Kansas. And authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. Questions?
I do have a quick question. The half a million dollars that we're saving, how is that saved? Is that like just over the term of the payoff, or is it lump sum type thing? Any, any kind of guidance on that?
I'd like to, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm really glad you asked the question, because I wanted to sort of reintroduce myself. I had worked with Bel Air some years ago, representing Springs dead as your financial advisor, and then, as you know, we hired Ryan Kitting, and we wanted to give Ryan a chance to untie ropes and spread his wings. From what I understand, he's done a fine job, a dead a fine job, involving, we were very sorry to lose him to the city warrants. But, for me, it's actually kind of a welcome, because I really enjoy working with Bel Air, and I'm very excited about getting to do so again. So, I'm going to get him the opportunity. To answer your question, that savings is the friends and values savings over the course of the remaining term of the bonds, and we'll be receiving that savings in roughly about equal amounts. And that's, those bonds run from one month, we'll be refunding 17 through 27, the turkeys, the other one is 70 through 22.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Welcome back.
First and second. There's no other questions, and I do appreciate the, telling us about that. We'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, staying with all this, is accepting the water and paving petitions for the Catholic Life Center Third Edition, and again, this is for straightened water there, the main part.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to move to accept the water and paving petitions for Catholic Life Center Third Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We both.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah. I've actually already checked on this, but it's something that I wanted to mention here at the public meeting, so anybody seeing this would kind of know the thinking behind it. When I saw this, I was actually a little concerned about a public paving petition for a entity that's tax exempt, and making sure that this was something that was an appropriate item to do. And I spoke with Mr. Lasher the other day about this, and he said that the public paving part of it is actually a road that will connect into Central Park in the future. So, this will in fact be a public road that can be used by the general public, and I have no doubt that the folks in Central Park will find this a much more efficient route to get out to Woodlawn when that's constructed. So, that kind of jumped out at me, and I was concerned about it, because we already know how difficult it is to repair and maintain streets right now. So, he gave me some assurance that, that this is an appropriate petition.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that, because that was what I was going to ask. So, thank you.
I'm going to have some drawings and stuff here, too, so, yeah. Okay, any other questions or comment? Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Next, now, and C and D are related as were A and B, now they need to become resolutions. So we follow the legalese of everything, however, each mo, they need a separate motion, C and D would.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lee?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the City of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, that being pavement improvements for Catholic Life Center Third Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
We have first and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. She passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll go ahead and make the motion for D. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution determining the advisability of the marketing of certain internal improvements in the City of Bel Air, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such finding, water distribution system improvements, Catholic Life Center Third Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
We have first and second. Are there questions or comments on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is a, item E is a consideration of a contract for engineering services between Bel Air and MKEC. This is for engineering a paving of Bethany Drive, as well as certain water mains inside this Third Edition at Catholic Life Center. And all costs, you know, engineering, et cetera, all of these are gonna be paid for from, from the bond, but then with the special assess and everything. So the city actually is not paying, but doing, going through everything with the bonds.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for engineering services with MKEC, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
We have first and second. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is that, this is a street that's gonna then connect up there, right?
Yes.
Right? Okay. I didn't realize that was the name of it, so.
Now, Mr. Lasher, it won't be completed all the way through at this time. This is just the next step to get it closer to connection. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Because this is Phase 3, there's a Phase 4 that goes farther up, and...
Yeah, I was looking.
Looks like that would be it, and that's when it would actually...
Connect.
Connect, yep. As you can see, this is Phase 3 right here, and there's the road.
Okay.
And it'll come up here, come across, and then right up there where it runs into Central Park.
So it's Bethany the whole way through as it goes around?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. We have first and second. Are there any other questions or comments? Call for the vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Next, and Sarah is here from Gilmore and Bell. If we have any questions on this, this is, item F is between Terry Gerlot and her bank, but something that we have to approve, even though, again, money really doesn't touch the city here. But this is consideration of a second modification agreement between Concierge Surgical Recovery Center and Community National Bank and Trust. Such a modification relates to the IRB issued by the city, and therefore, that's why we need to approve it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to know why there was so many delays on this particular project. Could somebody address that?
I don't know. Sarah, do you wanna come up and, yeah?
I don't, sure. Why, I don't know.
And again, this is Sarah Steele from Gilmore and Bell.
Thank you, Mayor Austin, council members. I was approached by Community National requesting that I interact with the city regarding this second modification. I was not involved in drafting, although I did review and make sure that it was in compliance with the bond documents. Beyond that, I'm, I'm bond counsel to the city, and so I'm not representing the concierge in any way. I think initially, when they started construction, there were some heavy rains, and as I recall, there was a great deal of mud. Does anyone else remember that?
Uh huh.
And beyond that, I, you know, I think the untidling death of Dr. Watson kind of put a wrench into things, and, you know, so the bank thankfully has been willing to work with them, and had modified, extended a period of time during which they were paying interest only on these Series A bonds that are wholly owned by Community National. This second modification is again designed to give them just a little bit more time during which they can pay interest only, and not have to start repaying principal on the bonds up until July 1 of 2015. The modification also releases a couple of these smaller guarantees that they have placed on, on the Series A bonds owned by Community National, in light of receipt of some life insurance proceeds on Dr. Watson. So, those were the two modifications here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Okay, so as reading this, really, the city has no financial thing. We just need to say we agree that we can extend it. Is that what we're saying, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Again, this is an industrial...
Right, right.
...city has no liability for it.
It's just...
But as the owner of the property and the issuer of these Series 213A bonds, the city does need to approve.
Right, that's what I, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the second modification agreement between Concierge Surgical Recovery Center LLC and Community National Bank and Trust, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Second, we have a first and second. And that, Dr. Becker made the second. Okay, didn't, are there any other questions or comments on this? Yeah, okay. Sarah, thank you for being here. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right. And we certainly wish them luck. It's a beautiful facility, and we want to see it going. Okay. Next is a 800 kilowatt generator for City Hall. This is something, again, that we've discussed, that we discussed at length at our workshop. And I know the city has tried for years to try to get federal grant dollars for this, but those dollars and that monies, those monies are becoming harder and harder and harder to get, and we've not been successful. We actually received the $85,000 from insurance reimbursement that was somewhat of a nice surprise to the city. It was a real nice surprise for that. And the fact that we don't have a generator, you know, for a city, you know, I mean, we're talking essential services, emergency, you know, this is kind of the gathering point and everything. So we, at the last workshop, it was discussed that we would use those funds so that we can finally have that backup generator. We did contact four different companies for pricing, however, only one of them responded, and it's, you know, $25,000 less than that little surprise, so.
Yes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the quote from Atlas Electric for the purchase and installation of an 80 KW owning generator at a cost not to exceed $60,500, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second. Any other questions, comments?
I have some questions. Is this, it makes a comment that diesel fuel is the preferred fuel for this particular generator. And I'd like to know where the tank for this generator would be. Would it be underground, or would it be above ground?
It's my understanding, I believe it's actually included in the, the generator unit.
Okay.
And it's all covered and encased with the motor and the tank and such.
Okay, well, it says something about the diesel being the preferred fuel. Having driven trucks for a long time, I know that diesel fuel gels. And so if you fill this up initially, and we get two degree weather, that generator may not work, because the fuel can be gelled. So, I'd like to know about that if I could, you know, if we can determine, make a determination with the company that there's some kind of guarantee that the way it's set up, that the fuel will not gel, or we'll have to put a winterized diesel fuel, we'd like to do in Minnesota and Canada.
Yeah, okay. Sure, yeah, we can make sure that that's taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Lasher.
My recollection, and I can't speak to this one directly, but I think most of the ones that I've seen, because we do like sanitary sewer lift stations, and they, they often have diesel generators, most of those have a heater in there that'll keep the...
Do you do?
...fuel from getting too cold. That's my understanding on most of those. So I don't know that's an issue. And then as far as the fuel, those things will cycle and run every month, so it won't, the fuel won't stay in there all, it'll, it'll use the fuel over time, because it'll, it has to run every month to make sure that it actually does run.
I was unaware of that. Thank you for that explanation.
That's why we asked the question. Perfect. I like it, okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. I'd just like to say I'm real happy to see this coming into our city again. I think it's another, you know, service for our citizens that we've been darn lucky, darn lucky in the past, that, that we honestly didn't have that backup, so. And with, like with other things, we kinda hope we never have to use it, but we're gonna be darn glad and have it there, so, okay. Next, item H, we're talking about a PUD with, with Catholic Life Center, still talking about that Third Edition there. And with this, this, you know, we have the preliminary plat, like I said, we're going into Phase 3, as we've discussed. This is the, the city services fee. Now Catholic Care Center is being under a church, they, and a not-for-profit, so they're tax exempt. The original PUD agreement contained a $250 fee per living unit. That kinda helps to fray the cost of city services, and this could be, you know, adjusted every five years, and it, it had not changed in eight years, and basically, of what we're doing about, this is a new agreement that adds a 2% increase each year to allow for the increased cost. It's already been paid in, in 2015, so we're talking about for 2016. The Planning Commission has approved this, and their minutes, you know, I think you guys have all seen their minutes, so, and also, you know, staff had a lot of input throughout this process, and it's comfortable moving forward. And, you know, this is good for, you know, to help with the cost, you know, when our police department or the fire, you know, uses and drives on our roads and all of that. So I think it's a, a good neighborly thing for both.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised planned unit development and agreement for the Catholic Life Center Third Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second. Are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And final action item before council tonight is approving the purchase of seven new laptop computers for the, for our police patrol vehicles. And again, this is something that we discussed at length at our last workshop. Kinda stunned to find out with the current computers, that, you know, they weren't backlit, and the fact that some of them were failing. This is something that is needed, you know, our police department, they, they need these to, it's a vital piece of equipment. This is what they use to run tags, driver's license, can do warrant searches, et cetera, et cetera. And we all want to keep them safe as well. This will come out of the capital improvement line item, which after this would, would have a balance of $66,000 for that. So, that's before you tonight. We, see here, it looks like we got two, two bids that were slightly over $27,000. Again, this is for, for all seven, and these are the special computers they need.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Dr. Becker?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of seven Gitac S400 laptops from CDW Government at a cost not to exceed $27,500, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
We have first and second. Questions or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd just like to state that when we did discuss this before, these computers, or the laptops, were $31,000, and staff worked to get them down $4,000 savings.
Excellent point, yeah.
Yes.
So I appreciate staff working on that to get those down.
Excellent point.
Mr. Mayor? And I had a question, and it might have been answered, and I missed it in the packet. On the ones that we currently have, what are we going to do with those? Was it in here?
No, some of them don't work.
Right, I figured the batteries were dead. It said on...
Yeah, yeah.
Lion shredding day, is that?
Maybe the...
Well, because I, no, the only reason I asked was because I was worried about the sensitive information.
Right.
After we had gone to that SCAP meeting that one time, and the Homeland Security came and talked to us about stuff like that, I just wondered, wanted to make sure we were just gonna just dispose of them, something like that.
We'll wipe them clean, to get all the dead off, and then either dispose of them at the, the recycling day, or if some of them are still working, we may be able to utilize them like at the shop or something like that.
Okay.
Where it's a dustier environment, we don't want to put a new laptop in there. But it would be nice for them to have a computer.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then, try to use them if we can somewhere else.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, he, he had kinda scared some of us about nothing's ever really wiped, and...
And there are, KCJIS is a group through the state that talks about how you handle all that sensitive, and they may actually require us to...
Take them up there.
Or take the hard drives out, and that kind of stuff...
That's fine.
Before we can recycle.
I just wondered.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Maybe would the chief like to comment on them?
He's still here?
He is here.
Everything Mr. Lasher said, Mr. Ryan, KCJIS, and there are some rules that require us to wipe the, the hard drives, and if not wiped thoroughly with a multi-step process, then they have to be destroyed.
Okay.
And, yes, they, some of them can be repurposed, or other parts of the city where it's not put through the rugged uses, as with the police department, the guys who can break golden balls.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
I don't have a question, but I'd just like for you to explain to the public why these laptop computers are so much more expensive than just the average laptop computer nowadays.
The, the consumer brand of laptop is not recognized usually. They, they're a consumer product. Well, for mega consumers like police departments, fire departments, EMS, those need to be recognized because sometimes they drop. Sometimes they're, they're, they're knocked around with fire departments, EMS, police departments, sheriff's offices, they're in patrol vehicles, and you go down some road or something, and you have a consumer brand product, consumer level product, it's taken a heavy beating. These are recognized to, to, like the one that we've suggested to purchase is made to mill spec, so there's some military specifications that it has to meet so that it will last for, for the use that it's going to be put through. So they're semi-recognized, they have solid state instead of the old plate type hard drives in them. These are, the specs on these assist, inside the unit, the CPU is made so that it dissipates heat faster, so that in the summer, like a couple of our vehicles have dark front windows, well, that is to keep the heat out, because they experienced the problem when these were first installed, with computers shutting down on their own when they got them up. We're trying to work with that, also. Another backup keyboard, that's something that these computers have that the new computers will have, the current ones don't, and that, that's a big... a big issue, as an officer says, with the batteries. The, a few times a day, even in my vehicle, I have to go out and restart the computer and get it running again. It takes a few minutes, but if I'm on my way to a call, or if the officers are on their way to a call, that is how they find out about what's involved in the call. So they need that information before they get there. And it can delay a response, because it's important information that they are able to access. So there are a few other things. The manager mentioned KCGIS. KCGIS rules dictate how we operate the computers and what we can put in them and how we log in. And these computers, the Gitac S400s, will have, I think, a little scanner, which will assist with a, let me think of my, excuse me, two-factor authentication, because we have to use passwords and then other passwords just to get into where we can access confidential information. And we can do that on these current models. But this will have, we're looking forward, we're looking to the future with what the KCGIS group is going to require, and this fits that bill. Anything else?
I, I'm glad, because, you know, computers have gotten so much cheaper. And when people look at the price of this, they'll think, ooh, that sounds kind of high. But I did some research online, and I think you got a pretty good deal.
I think you did too. And I will say that several other departments in the area have found this model of computer to be a good deal.
Yeah, it's the highest rated.
It was a good system.
That mean he's not going to come back and ask us for more?
All right, thank you so much, Chief.
You have a question?
Yeah, it's been answered.
No.
Anybody else have? Okay. We do have a first and second on the motion to purchase the seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, for council is, there is need for a workshop, looking at next Tuesday, at 6:30. Does that work for everybody?
Mr. Mayor, if possible, I would prefer to start closer to 7 o'clock. I'm supposed to take my daughter to indoor soccer practice at the rec center. So I'd prefer it to start at 7 if we could.
I think we can do that. I can do that.
Fine with me.
Okay, let's change that to 7 o'clock. Anytime we can accommodate for family, we want to do it, so.
Do we have any idea what's going to be on this? Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we'll talk about, see, I know, we'll talk about our, the marketing plan. Will it be the big one? Slasher, what are the other? I can't, off the top of my head. I know we.
Marketing was a big one. Some of the, the campaign that the Community Development Committee is working on, we'll kind of go over that.
Yeah, the beautification one, that's right, yeah.
Actually be some things for you to approve. Legislative platform, talk about that. Sunflower Commerce Park a little bit. So, and then if there's anything else council wants to bring up.
Sounds good, 7 o'clock.
Okay. All righty. I have no need for an executive session. Is anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Two seconds on that.
Go watch the election results, right?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, 7:54.